Be council meeting Monday, December thirteenth with a roll call.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
Acting City Attorney Duncan.
Here.
Acting City Manager Martini.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's start off with our invocation, Rajan.
I shall be starting the prayer with Gayatri mantra which is considered the most sacred mantra of Hinduism, followed by hymns from pre-B.C. Hindu scriptures. I shall be starting my prayer with Gayatri mantra which is considered the most sacred mantra of Hinduism, followed by hymns from pre-B.C.E. Sanskrit scriptures, reading in Sanskrit followed by interpretation in English. Om Bhurbhvahe swaha tattvitur varanayam bhargo devasya dimahi diyo yo na prachodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the TT Supreme, who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma sadgamya tamso ma jyotir gamya mritthor mamrata gamya. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Dusma dha sakta statham karyam karma samachara saktohaya charan karma parama panothi purusha karma ne vahisam siddhi. Masita chanka deya lokasangreha me vapi sampashankar tumrahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world by devotion to selfless. One attain the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om saha navavatu saha nobanaktu saha viryan karba bahai dejasvi navadita mastu maavid visabahai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samne va kuti samna hirdya ne va samna mastu vama no yatha vasusa hasti. United your resolve, united your hearts. May your spirits be at one that you may long together dwell in unity and conquer. Om shanti, shanti, shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Om. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abbott, will you lead us in the pledge?
Please show me the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is unified by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go into public comment. Mark, do you want to work your way down here? Okay, we'll just do that. Yes, you are.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name. Hello, Ajahn. My name is Mark Markel, and I'm a concerned, oh, first of all, I was saying Christmas. And hello, everybody, all of council members and the city attorneys, city manager. And my name is Mark Markel. I'm a concerned Nevada resident. I, um, I don't know what to say.
Mark has asked me to read this clipping from a newspaper for him. A Ucaiba man was arrested for investigation of, no, which one? Which one?
Wrong article.
Top one?
No, I already did, but it's off here.
Okay, and then go to the next page?
Yeah.
Okay. Ucaiba accident. A Ucaiba man was critical, in critical condition Friday at Loma Linda University Medical Center where he was taken for treatment of head injuries after a car crash Thursday, authorities said. Mark Markel, 24, was thrown from a 1977 Datsun as it overturned on Live Oak Canyon Road at the eastbound Interstate 10 off-ramp at 4:30 PM, said California Highway Patrol Officer Amber Drysdale. Markel's brother Matthew, 20, of Cherry Valley, was driving south on Live Oak Canyon when he lost control of the car, struck a curb, and skidded into the off-ramp, the officer said. The vehicle rolled over several times and landed on top of Mark Markel, Drysdale said. The cause of the accident is under investigation.
I'm here today because I want to give all the great city of Sparks a Christmas gift. I'm warning people and showing people the dangers of driving with a drunk driver. And my, my Christmas gift is very joke. It never is. I lost my wife back in 97. And my kids don't talk to me. They live in California. So this, I don't want anyone to feel sorry for me. I just don't want this to happen to anybody else. It, it's a complete mishap. I, I, the drunk, getting a car is drunk driving mishap. I don't know what to say. Just want to warn people not to drive with drunk drivers and not to drink and drive. And it'll, it'll ruin your, your holiday. This will ruin your holidays. It'll ruin all the holidays. I'm sorry. Bye. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Happy holidays to you. Mark Sullivan. Come on up and have a seat. Give us your name for the record.
Do I have to get the mask on?
Unfortunately, we got a tough slave driver of a governor.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Mark Sullivan. I'm the chairman of the Board of the Reno Housing Authority. I'm joined today by Amy Jones, our executive director. We're here today to talk a little bit about the housing issue and ask for your help. RHA assists over 4,000 households through our public housing units, voucher programs, and unsubsidized market rate units. What I see is one of the biggest issues in housing right now is that housing costs and incomes are misaligned for a large portion of some of the most vulnerable members of our community. I think we all understand that housing has no jurisdictional boundary when it comes to availability or costs. What you're seeing on the screen right now, if you could show the screen, can we have that? Anyway, there's a recent apartment survey that was performed by real estate appraisers Johnson, Perkins, and Griffin. And those average rents that you'll see for apartments of all types in this region are in excess of $1,600 a month. And Sparks, there are two survey areas they did, which, if we get that up, you'll see in three and four. The average rents between those two areas are $1,675 a month, which is $20,000 a year. And one of the things that you'll see is vacancy rates are extremely low. As an example of the challenge for a single-person household renting a one-bedroom, making $30,000 a year, which is $15 an hour, basically. The average one-bedroom rent being $1,419, which is $17,000 a year, that means roughly 57% of that person's income would go towards rent. The Housing Authority primarily serves individuals that make less than 50% area of median income, roughly that $30,000 income. So like I had mentioned, those affected are the most often vulnerable populations in our community: senior citizens, veterans, families, individuals with disabilities. Many of our kids graduating from college may take several years before they earn the area median income. My daughter, who lives here in Sparks, she doesn't make AMI, and she has a master's degree. Is it working? So we'll show you a little map of the Housing Authority, what properties we own in the area. But the Housing Authority has developments and ownership in all jurisdictional entities. That map shows multifamily and individual units in Sparks that we own and operate. And one of the things she'll show is a couple of pictures also. The units that we own are well-maintained. I don't believe most people would recognize our properties as public housing. We have a high standard for maintaining our units to ensure our assets, our properties are assets to the community, which is also why RHA is one of the nation's top-rated housing agencies and has been for many years. One of the reasons of being here today is availability of money is provided through the American Rescue Plan Act and the requests for 15% of Sparks' allocation of that money to be dedicated to RHA for housing. I understand Sparks has had some discussion around waiting to see what the state decides to do with their ARPA funds, and I think that makes sense. But regardless of what they do, they're not going to solve the housing crisis for us. Whatever they do may help, but what we need to do is get started at a local level as soon as possible. 15% of the money that's allocated to Sparks equates to $2.4 million in today's market. That's about $250,000 a unit. If we finance that at 50% loan-to-value, we'd probably produce 19 units. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to... Did I miss somebody? Come sit down over here and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Jay Vonaeva. Good afternoon. My name is Jay Vonaeva, and I'm here to comment on the inaction done by the Sparks Police Department. Initially, I came here to speak on my own qualms, but I would also like to extend my comment to two other incidences that have been left unresolved and ignored by the Sparks Police. First, I would like to thank you all for having this open forum for the public to speak. As a former UNR debater, I am highly appreciative and in support of avenues where regular civilians such as myself can hopefully make a political stance against injustices, especially those done by people in positions of power. On November 19th, I was working at the front desk of the Hampton Inn down by the Marina. At 4:00 AM, near the end of my overnight shift, a man entered the building proclaiming he was running low on gas. His daughter had his main form of transportation, and his second vehicle was low on fuel. His daughter had also taken his wallet, but the money, but he had money back at home in his safe off in northwest Reno by Verdi. I told him I couldn't give him any money as he would just leave without returning, so I asked if he had anything of value that I could hold on to for insurance and even asked about his wristwatch. He claimed that it was a gift with sentimental value and cost much more than the $60 he asked for gas. I told him it would be only a temporary exchange, so he agreed. Asking me not to scratch his watch, he left with the guarantee that he'd be back before 5:00 AM. Yes, my naivety and kind-heartedness got the best of me, and for that, I am truly regretful. However, as it was all caught on camera, I figured I would have police identification technology on my side. However, I was sorely mistaken. After filing a criminal police report under NRS 2050.0832, which specifies theft as including material misrepresentation specifically regarding the watch, I was called by Lieutenant W. Now, I didn't catch his full name over the phone, and I couldn't find it online, which I think is a separate issue altogether. But I was called by the lieutenant and told that my case was a civil matter as it was a verbal agreement. Now, when I asked about the specific statute regarding scams as theft, he said he wasn't going to argue the law with me and told me to go to small claims court instead. Meanwhile, the scammer is still out on the streets, justice unserved. Aggravated, I went to a community Facebook group to complain. Now, overwhelming responses on how I was the foolish one and how the Sparks Police wouldn't monetarily benefit from my case, thus it was dead in the water, did not help. However, two commenters, Melanie H., who had her Jeep stolen three years ago and was dismissed by Sparks Police, and Lizzie B., who had, whose ex admitted to stealing $800 from her two years ago, was also ignored by authorities, which led me here. It is not an isolated issue. It is not about the $60 I lost. It is about the sheer lack of competence and follow-through by the department designed to protect and serve. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else in the public wishing to speak at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Let's move on to approval of the agenda. Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the agenda, hearing item 11.1 after item 7.3.
Okay, we've got a motion for Mr. Abbott.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and second. Any further discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, let me keep up with myself here. Minutes, looking for a motion to approve the minutes from November 22nd. Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to approve the minutes of the Spark City Council meeting for November 22nd, 2021, as presented.
Okay, Ms. Bybee.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to item 7.1. Boards and Commissions Vacancy Announcement, Sparks Senior Senator Advisory Committee, and Boards and Commissions Vacancy Announcement, Sparks Equity Inclusionary Advisory Board. Mr. Martini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are three vacancies on the Sparks Senior Citizen Advisory Committee for alternates for wards two, three, and four. Each vacancy is co-terminous with the appointed elected official. Applicants must be Sparks residents, preferably over the age of 55. Applications will be accepted until February, or till Friday, January 14th, 2022, at 5:00 PM. The second is for our Sparks Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board. The newly-created Sparks Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board has seven vacancies. Board members must reside in the City of Sparks. Initial terms will be for three or four years to be determined upon appointment. Applications will be accepted until Friday, December 17th, at 5:00 PM. Persons interested in serving on these committees should complete a community services application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us/GetInvolved. Then click on volunteering for a Sparks Board Commission meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's move on to 7.3, Presentation, and Wash County Register of Voters on the upcoming 2022 election, including voter registration, registration list maintenance, mail-in ballots, ballot processing, and election statistics. Ms. Deanna Specula. Company by Mark Blash. How would I do? Close? I got, I got the last letter right.
Good afternoon. My name is Deanna Specula. I am the Register of Voters for Washoe County. And I just wanted to thank you for this opportunity to come and speak at your council meeting. Council meeting about important upcoming election-related topics, especially since we're going into 2022 election coming up here really quickly. First, I want to mention voter registration. That's one of the cornerstones of everything that we do, is that voter registration component. There are many methods by which people can register to vote, whether it be by paper application. They can go online to the Secretary of State's website. They can participate through, they can register to vote at the DMV with any covered transaction that they complete at the Department of Motor Vehicles. And really, right now, that is the majority of the registration information that we get is now from the Department of Motor Vehicles. And it's mostly, there's more people updating their information, which is a good thing. We're getting cleaner voting rolls. We're getting people updating other information that's really important to us for contact, especially since we're going into an election year with all mail-in ballots. So what's important also for people to understand about registration records is once they're entered into our system, we do a nightly upload to the Secretary of State's office. They do a verification. We check with the DMV and SSA for ID information. And we also make sure that there's no misspellings in names, that there's no other validation errors before we allow a voter to vote at any of our polling locations or by ballot. So with, passed in 20, I'm sorry, in 2019, and was first implemented in 2020, was same-day registration. That is something that is new to us, and it is where somebody can go at an early voting location or an election day polling vote center and register to vote on the same day. They can also use the online system through the Secretary of State's website. For this, to do same-day registration, it is required that you have a Nevada's driver's license or ID card, and you will actually be voting a provisional ballot, and that's in order so we have time to verify the information that's provided to us by the voter and that they haven't voted in another jurisdiction in this state before we cast their ballot. Another question we get a lot and something that is voter list maintenance, something that a lot of people ask about. How do we keep our rolls clean? What do we do to ensure that we're following those federal mandates to have updated voting rolls? So there's four, there's two main acts that impact this, and that would be the National Voter Registration Act of 1993, which we call NVRA, and the Help America Vote Act of 2002, which we call HAVA or HAVA, depending on how you like to pronounce it. And most of the things that have come, that revolve around voter registration list maintenance has been codified in state statutes and regs. So we've made a lot of strides. So some of the highlights of the laws is a plate of voter list maintenance. Again, we're required to make sure that we keep our lists accurate, and, but we must also incorporate specific safeguards to remain in compliance with NVRA. So any program or activity must be uniform and non-discriminatory. We can't target a certain area, a certain group, a certain person. Those are things that it's, it has to be a uniform, non-discriminatory program that we're running to update our voter records. It has to be completed not later than 90 days prior to a federal election. And again, this doesn't mean, so 90 days doesn't mean that we still can't cancel records. We still get information from vital statistics. We still can use people who are actually just wanting to cancel their registration because they've moved out of the jurisdiction or out of the state. There's certain things that we can do. If we get mail, return undeliverable, we can start the process of sending a voter, voter, it's a registration confirmation card that we send out to either reach out to the voter and say, hey, can you please update your information with us? Because it, you know, it looks like we don't have your updated information. Or they can cancel the registration at that time, or they can tell us we're temporarily away. But we have to send that card out. And then after that, we can, we can inactivate them if we either don't hear from them or it's returned, the second card is returned undeliverable. So again, as I was just saying, that for part of NVRA is that that's, must be a sent, affordable confirmation card so before we can inactivate or remove a voter. If it's returned undeliverable, voter's status is changed to inactive. And if the voter does not update their information or appear to vote within two federal election cycles, then they will be canceled. Other safeguards that are in place would be also that people do have a right, notwithstanding a change in address in certain circumstances, to vote. Examples are voters who move within a district or a precinct. They retain that right to vote even if they have not re-registered at the new address for one last election. And there's also safeguards against removal of voters strictly for non-voting. That is not, the intention is to update information. We're not trying to remove somebody because they're not voting. But if we have had no contact with them and we reach out to them and we don't get a response, or the information, the card comes back undeliverable, then we would inactivate. They're still eligible. An inactive voter is still eligible to vote. It's just when they appear to vote, they will have to either update their information with us or confirm that the information that we have on file is correct. It's only after those two federal election cycles where they have been inactive that they would be canceled if they don't respond or don't appear to vote. So list maintenance, I won't, I won't run down this whole list. This is just something that, this is a voter registration list maintenance that we do. We do daily maintenance and we do program-based maintenance. I think Mark will probably talk a little bit about Eric, so I won't really go into that. But we are constantly getting reports from the Secretary of State's office or from voters themselves wanting to update their information or getting notifications that somebody has moved or that they, they have, somebody has died and we need to remove them from the voting rolls. All right, let me switch speeds a little here because I'm sure everyone's dying to hear about all mail ballot elections coming up. Again, it's going to be new. It's something that we haven't done. We do absentee ballots. We've done them in the past. But there's no longer a requested absentee ballot. It will be just straight mail-in, and every active registered voter will receive that ballot in the mail. They can still vote in person. So somebody who wants to vote early voting or at election day on a voting machine, they can still do that. They can bring their ballot with them and vote it in person at a polling location as well and drop that ballot off to be returned to our office. So there's more options out there now for people to participate. But one thing, if you do go to vote in person, you're required to either surrender your ballot or sign an affirmation. That would be required at that point. Yeah, just do this quickly together. It's just a slide, and it's, I was looking at last year. I know last year is not comparable because of COVID. It was, it was a very unique year for voting. But just from Washoe County turnout and the City of Sparks turnout, they're pretty consistent with who mailed in their ballot, who appeared to early vote, and who voted on election day. So I just thought this was interesting. It would be interesting for you guys to see that that's similar to other areas of our community. So mail-in ballot processing. So we do require bipartisan boards on all of our mail-in ballot, or used to be absentee ballot processes. And that includes in the check-in and signature verification staff. It includes the tally staff, our duplication boards, our adjudication boards. That mix of a bipartisan, it makes, is always, is always required for us. We also have a rule of two-person teams that, that are required to be on the floor if there's any ballots out and not being securely stored. So that's, that's kind of a, obviously, something that we want to encourage our staff to always follow those safeguards. If there's never one person left alone with a tray of ballots or, you know, closet full of ballots, that there's always a second person. And usually, we're so busy, there's tons of people around. But that's, that's kind of a, again, one of our chain of custody and process processes that we want to keep in place and we really emphasize with our staff. So the process of a ballot, we call it the life of a ballot. Incoming ballots are checked into our voter registration system, and that records that somebody has returned a ballot. At this point, it doesn't say that they're, that that ballot is going to be cast. It's just that they've returned a ballot. It's not until after we do signature verification that we determine whether a ballot is valid and needs to move on to the processing to be tallied. Signatures are compared to the signature for the voter on file, and it's the signature that's on their voter registration record. We do a manual process for signatures. We do not have a, a election software, a signature verification system. I know, I know there's a lot of jurisdictions that do in other states, and also our friends down south are also using it. But at this point in time, we are still doing a manual verification of all signatures. If a signature is verified, it moves on to the, you know, to where we stage and sort by precinct, and we get our ballots ready to be opened. At 14, at 14 days prior to the election, we can actually, we call it the opening party, where we're just, everyone's just going to sit around open, open, and we do it in a specific way. It's, it's in an effort to make sure that the secrecy of the ballot is still maintained for that voter so that we can't trace that back. Is once we separated the secrecy sleeve and the envelope and the ballot, those envelopes are wrapped up and put in a different location, and those ballots are just prepped to be ready to be tallied. We also have audits of our systems as far as we have to verify that the number of ballots we've checked into our voter registration system is equal to the actual number of physical ballots that we have in our hands as we're sorting and getting ready to tally. And that starts at 14 days prior to election day, and then it continues daily. We're re-verifying. We're making sure that we have all the ballots that we checked in, that, you know, we don't have any stragglers, that kind of thing. So we do that now before opening. We also do it right after opening. So when we, we would actually do a hand count to count those ballots before we would send it to the tally room to the people who are actually running the to count those ballots before we would send it to the tally room, to the people who are actually running those ballots. That was also a hand count and then the machines counting. So they'll verify that the number of ballots that they've sent through the tally system is equal to the, the number of ballots that has gone through the audit trail to that point. So here's just some additional resources. And then I'll throw it over to Deputy Secretary Vlachin. Just some resources. Our website is a great place to get information. So please, anytime you, you feel like you're missing some information, if you don't see it there, let us know. And it's, if you have that question, other people do. So we'll add more content to our, our website as people have questions and we want to answer those questions. All right, again, thank you very much. I appreciate being able to come here and speak to you today.
Good afternoon. Mark Vlachin, Deputy Secretary of State for Elections for the record. First of all, I want to thank you for the invitation for Registrar Specula and I to come talk to you today. This is something that we've continued to try to reassess our ability to and find ways to improve how we communicate with voters. And coming to events such as this are absolutely one of the primary ways that we're able to convey new information. Registrar Specula touched on it a little bit. But when you think back to the session that transpired earlier in 2021, there was a multitude of new election bills that were passed in helping to get out to voters and explain to them not only how things maybe happened before that continue, but also the changes, you know, not only from Assembly Bill Four, but also from the legislative session. So they can understand that, right? Because I think we all saw that there's, there's a significant amount of voter confusion. You know, just trying to understand processes that maybe once upon a time folks weren't as in tune with or curious about. So this certainly is an important event and I appreciate that. Secretary of State Barbara Sigaski, of course, is the state's chief election official. I was responsible for the execution and enforcement of all of Title 24, all of our elections related bills and all of the federal statutes related as well. The hundreds and hundreds of pages, I'm still so impressed when I, when I see a presentation like this and how the registrar with her experience is able to cut to the quick and identify those that matter. And that again, it signifies the importance. On top of that, though, I will say that we have not been sitting by idly. I was appointed as the deputy for elections in October of 2020. And since then, the secretary has tasked me with working closely with the 17 clerks and registrars across the state, the Elections Division and others, to ensure that the things that we're doing to support secure and safe and fair elections in Nevada continue. And to frankly, look to see if there are room, if there's room for improvement, if we're able to adjust, then we need to be doing so. And that, that process continued for my predecessor and picked up when I was appointed in October. A great number of things that I could go into and I'm going to be very careful about not because otherwise I tend to speak for hours about this sort of thing that we're all very passionate about and working extremely hard. But, but some of the highlights on top of the things that the registrar just touched on. We're conducting a full review, soup to nuts, of every elections related regulation in the administrative codes. And that started in last January. It was no small feat and the staff has been working closely with the registrar, her staff and the clerks across the state to make sure that we're thinking critically about these regulations. What do they say? What needs to be updated? And if they do need to be updated, let's make sure that we're able to do so in a proper manner. There's a statutory limitation, of course, on elections related regulations. They have to be in place by the last business day of February of an election year. So we are getting close to the finish line and are approaching rapidly the time when we're going to invite and request public input. The workshops will be noticed later on in about a week or two. And we anticipate them going towards the end of January. Those events, again, not only public workshops for public comment about these elections related regulations, but also of course, opportunities for your constituents to provide written feedback as well, which again, will be very much encouraged and much sought after. Those regulations, again, the intent is to have them in place prior to the last business day of February so that we can go into the 22 election cycle secure and in understanding for both the clerks and their staffs as well as the public is to the things that we do. Right? I think again, you all know better than most, but there's a lot of folks out there that just don't understand what happens to lead up to the point where they have a ballot in their hand or standing in front of a voting machine. And trying to help get the word out, I think is going to be a significant part of our effort to reduce confusion going into the following, the next two election cycles. We talked about outreach already. But again, I do want to mention that if any part of this presentation or if there's any future questions that you all have in regards to any of the statutes, regulations, or anything friendly that rhymes with elections in Nevada, then I'm wholeheartedly open to coming back and either talking one-on-one or certainly in this forum so that we can provide that information. It would be very much appreciated. And lastly, I guess I understand there may be some questions, so I don't want to use all the time. But I do want to highlight two last things that, again, of the multitude of tasks the secretary has directed me to focus on. The two that I want to leave you with, first and foremost, of course, are the implementation of the bills that were passed during this last legislative session. About 10, to be clear, that are elections related. And when you think back to previous legislative sessions, sometimes maybe one, maybe two elections related bills, but there's a significant number. Those, of course, again, we're working closely with, again, the clerks, registrars and their staffs to make sure that they are implemented in a secure manner. So that going into the 2022 election cycle, again, the bills that were passed and approved, again, should not create concern for your voters in regards to cybersecurity measures or releasing of PII. It's a very methodical process that we've added to make sure that, again, this implementation of these bills is done properly to meet the statutory requirements. And then second, and the registrar touched on it a little bit, but just to reiterate, list maintenance. One of the most clear, you know, effective means for us going forward to really ensuring a reduction of the risk of voter fraud and really reassuring your voters as well. That's something that, as mentioned, actually happens every day. We've gotten questions, you know, how many times do you do it per decade? Maybe once or twice or something, not realizing that it's, again, a daily event. But we continue to review how we do list maintenance and develop ways to improve upon it. One of those, again, as mentioned, is the Electronic Registration Information Center or AR. It's something that Nevada was a founding member of originally when the, the program was first developed. But that's one of a multitude of means that we are doing to review the names on our list, to sorting out, to make sure that only, you know, those individuals who are still living here, still alive, are on the list, those sorts of things. So that is a process that, again, I could probably go into great detail on. But the bottom line is, again, list maintenance efforts are underway. We continue to review them and improve upon them. And already, there's a number of steps that we've taken at the Secretary of State's office in close coordination with the clerks to make sure that the lists will be more clean already. I can guarantee that than in years past. So again, this is something that all of us collectively recognize as being important. All of us recognize that at the end of the day, again, pursuant to Assembly Bill 321, everyone, every active registered voter will be getting a ballot. And if we have individuals that, for example, are deceased, we've removed them from the list. So that's one less ballot that the state will have to pay for going forward. One less chance to see a ballot, you know, again, in a mailbox that where it possibly shouldn't be. So again, that is going forward. The part about return to sender, again, is something I will, as my closing comment, kind of drive home also. I think folks don't realize the role that they play in list maintenance. When I get a ballot or a piece of elections mail at my house for a former tenant, it's on me to not tear that up, which is so well intentioned, but unfortunately stops the process dead in its tracks. Again, a lot of younger voters that I've talked to, when I explain, you know, if you write not at this address, you know, return to sender, it goes back to the registrar's office. And that initiates a timeline, a process that helps keep our list even more clean. And people are like, you can write on mail? I thought that was like, I thought it was a crime or something. So yeah, unfortunately, it's been a minute since Elvis's Return to Sender came out. But we need to get that word out to folks more also so that they understand the role they take. Tearing up a ballot does no good. You tear up a postcard notification, then you're going to have to tear up a sample ballot and then you're going to have to tear up an actual ballot. When I would rather just a postcard, just writing return to sender, we'll again, get that back to the county clerk and registrar rather to start that process. So that being said, again, I appreciate your time and attention today. But I am here and available for questions if you have any.
Mr. Abbott.
I have a question. So, you know, just going back to last year when I ran for office, I remember mailing out campaign flyers and getting stuff sent back to me that people wrote either not on the address or doesn't live here. Is that of any help? Obviously they're gone, I already recycled the paper. But if you gave like, here, here's 50 of them that we got sent back, can you look into that? Or is that too personal or is that?
If it's official elections mail and?
No, it'd be my own campaign stuff that just came back to me. They're like, hey, that probably does nothing for you guys, right?
I mean, this is the Anna Specula for the record. We could use that to initiate like a mailing. So we wouldn't activate a voter at that point in time, but we might mail them an address confirmation card.
Got you.
Just to get the process started because we don't want to be mailing ballots and sample ballots to people who they're not living there.
For sure.
It's definitely something that nobody wants to see in their mailbox now. And it's a taxpayer money is important to us too. So we want to make sure that we're, we're trying our best in every method to be able to get our rolls as clean as possible before we start an election.
Cool. Thank you.
Mr. Dare.
Hey, thank you for coming. We appreciate it very much. This is always good to get good information. And obviously, we live in a time where the news out there has a lot of questions, which causes a lot of questions. So I thank you for, for sharing that. One of the questions I have is in our area, our chain of custody when it comes to what each of these ballots, what's, what's the plan to make sure that that stays? How do we handle that? I know you guys continually are working at improving this however we can. But what have you seen in that area and how do we make sure that's in place?
So there's two different, you know, chain of custody actually covers a wide range of topics. But we'll like focus on just the physical ballots and that being the actual mail-in ballots or the results cartridges that come back on election night. With everything that we send out, we have seals and tags and forms that we're having our poll workers fill out. Our audit teams with mail-in ballots are filling that information out. So we're following, we're following, like I said, the ballots, the mail-in ballot, the audit information is going to follow that ballot through the process. And it's similar to the results cartridges that come back from the physical machines at the polling location. The documentation is going to be there with it. It's going to stay with it with the poll worker as it's brought into our office and dropped off. And we do the exchange where we then take the physical custody and we document the custody of that. Does that answer your question or is there?
Sure.
Okay.
It's beginning of it.
Okay. As Mark said, we could talk for hours about this stuff, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, this is a matter of huge importance, not just to me, but to this council, to the city, to our state, to the nation. We really, we've got, I think, a lot of work on all of our parts to ensure election integrity and confidence and trust that I think was lost in the last election for a variety of reasons. But really, I look at my job on the city council is making sure that I can look at the residents of the City of Sparks and tell them that we've done everything we can for the city side of it to ensure the integrity of this election of their vote. Because not only do you not, not only do you want to maintain or regain that trust, but you don't want people who aren't going to vote. People who think that there's no point, they distrust the system. And we've lost some voters and none of us want to see that happen. Not considering how important the right to vote is. And if anyone who's lived in countries where you don't have that, we kind of take it for granted sometimes and it really is too critically important. So the integrity of this process is tough because mail-in ballots are just subject to, and you're explaining some of the things which is helping me a little bit more confidence. But when you're mailing out all ballots instead of just doing absentee, and I know that's not your choice, it's not our choice, it's what the legislature has passed and we have to live with that. But the mail-in, in terms of the mail-in, new all mail-in balloting, what do you think is going to be the most difficult challenge that you have in maintaining that election integrity? So you don't hear the stories of apartment complexes with ballots laying all over the place, of people taking them out of mailboxes. Ballot harvesting is a whole nother thing which you can legally do, which is a whole nother topic. But how do you, what do you think on this whole system? What do you foresee being the most difficult challenge for you and for the whole state to maintain and regain that trust and integrity?
I think, I will, do you want to? I think one of the things that we lost was a lot of misinformation. And that started back in 2020, I'm sorry, 2018 with a lot of people texting other people with like, you know, group texts going out to people. Misinformation was huge. That's when it really started, it really hit a peak last election cycle where people were confused. They were being told, you know, we're saying, oh, please listen to, you know, look at our website, look at the Secretary of State's website, please get your information from us. There was all these groups that are out there wanting to help and wanting, and they were sending information. And I think that that was one of the things that's where I think it started was people weren't sure, they, they lost that confidence of who they could talk to to get information for elections. And so that's, that's the beginning and Mark had mentioned and their focus. And some of our focus as well is voter education. Trying to get out there as in as many mediums as we can to reach people. So they are getting the correct information and they're not getting two different stories from two different groups and which causes the confusion and the anger. So that's, that's, it's going to be a big key push for us next year.
Go ahead.
May I add to?
Yes, please.
Mark Vlachin for the record. In addition to those, absolutely. And as mentioned, the first and foremost, I think the list maintenance is going to be a big part of regaining confidence. There will be less ballots going to individuals who no longer live at those addresses. There will be less individuals who receive a ballot or any elections mail for a loved one who has passed on. Those actions have already been taken and will continue to be taken to make sure that, again, ballots are going out to our active registered voters alone. In addition to the list maintenance, though, again, you know, pushing for the awareness of our new opt-out form. So individuals who do not want to receive a mail ballot are aware that hopefully they can submit a form to the registrar and it prevents them from being mailed a ballot at all. We don't take the ballot that was supposed to go to them and just set it to the side. Their, their name is struck from the list before it goes to the vendor. So there's never a ballot or envelope produced for those individuals who want to opt out. List maintenance combined with increased awareness of this opt-out ability will certainly reduce the amount of ballots that are getting sent out into the mail stream, which will again, hopefully increase voter confidence. And then lastly, you know, extensive discussions. We're not the first state to transition to a universal vote by mail. So knowing that, we spent a lot of time discussing best practices with some of my colleagues in other states, Washington, Oregon and others, where they've done this process before and in many cases for years. A lot of discussions about, you know, everything from a security at mail drop boxes to make sure and prevent arson, for example, all the way through, you know, what do you know after a decade of doing this that we don't yet? Please, please, you know, help fill us in so that we're not, you know, learning from our own mistakes, but can instead learn from yours. So there is a number of things that we're implementing and discussing internally and continue to do so with the clerks to make the process even more secure.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a couple more? So how do you ensure that, that mail-in ballot that I get? How do you make sure that someone doesn't show up at the polls or that someone is not voting twice? That it, and I would hope that it's all in the system and it's electronically not possible. But is it possible of somebody voting more than once or somebody taking my ballot? And I guess that goes to the signature verification, which you did address, that you manually check all the signatures when they come in. And I guess from Sparks' perspective, I would really like to see our city clerk. Last year, the last election, they were not allowed to be involved at all. And I think, I know we're doing a MOU right now with the county, but I would like to see City of Sparks clerk. And I think we are looking at whether we can provide people to be there because I would like to know that we had City of Sparks personnel that were there during this whole process, during signature verification, during the actual counting and tallying, that I think we need to have an active part in that. So I would, I would request that. But I guess the question is how, how do you make sure that someone else didn't vote for me or that someone has stopped voting twice?
So we do have systems in place. So in each ballot, physical ballot, there is identifying information that belongs to an individual voter. When we receive that back, it is immediately scanned into our system as quickly as we possibly can get those in. Those are, that system is connected almost in real time to all of our polling locations. So, I mean, literally the timing would have to be so close that we run a ballot and somebody's like getting checked in at a polling location for somebody to double vote. Otherwise, once we receive that ballot, it is marked as we've received something for you and that the person out at their early voting location, we got to do some research. They're going to have to wait. They're going to have to wait until we do the research or vice versa. Um, you know, if we get a ballot back, but they've already voted, um, we, we can see that. It's, it's tied to our system. We have great programmers at the county, um, and we actually use, it's a homegrown, um, system for our poll books. It's something we've been using, uh, for over a decade, um, so that it's very, we've been, we've had a great experience with it, um, it works really well. And again, we have that identifying information either on the ballot or at the polling location. And once it's scanned in and it's, it's, it's not real time, but it's within five minutes, that information is updated to all the poll books throughout, throughout the county.
So do you know that it's me strictly by the signature? And what if my signature changed? How do you know it's me when you get that ballot in that has the information? How do you know that I submitted it? Yeah.
So the voter ID that's on there, again, we'll, we'll scan it in first to say we received something. Then as soon as those are scanned in, um, basically giving somebody, you know, you're now tagged as having something returned, either early voting, election day, or the mail-in ballot. Then it goes to the signature verification process. So if you dropped off that ballot, we received it and you're now at an early voting location and trying to check in, we'd stop it and we'd have to say, okay, we have to research this. We see that we have something returned. We have to go find it and look at the signature to see if it matches or not. Um, there are cases where, um, especially with, uh, people who live in the same household, there's juniors and seniors, they have the same name. And when they're, uh, when they're at the polling location, sometimes they get checked in under the wrong name. So we have to do that research on every single record that we get that match to make sure that, we want to let everyone vote, but we also don't want to let anybody double vote. So we definitely want to check those. If it comes up in our system that, hey, this person, system, that, that this person's already voted, we're going to go do the research and we're going to go check it.
So it still is only signature verification since we don't have a, uh, photo ID requirement here in the state of Nevada. So my signature is what tells you that's my ballot. What if my signature has changed? I've got a 92-year-old father and elderly, especially their signatures are not the same. It's the only means for you to know or to check that that was my ballot or somebody else's ballot is by the signature, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So we can do identifying information as well. So, um, if they're at the polling location, uh, the poll worker can ask some questions like, where were you born? Um, what, other relevant information that would apply out to that person. Um, but signatures do change. Um, mine's never the same twice. Uh, we, we can update that information at the polling location. We have a voter update form, so we can capture a new signature. Um, there's also laws in place for somebody to help, um, assist a voter. So if somebody has, has, who's no longer able to sign, a person can now assist that voter and there's just, you know, you just have to supply your information saying, yes, I helped this person mark and sign their ballot. Um, so there's things we can do to help. Uh, in, in almost every case, there's something we can do to help out.
Thank you.
May I add one thing? Uh, Mark Velasquez for the record, uh, but you're hitting on a, a key point that I'm glad that you picked up on and it's something that we've identified internally as well as being a bit of a concern. Uh, i- it's not just some of our, our older voters, quite frankly. Uh, younger voters, uh, I'm noticing may never have learned what a signature is or what cursive is. And, uh, I, I've noticed that this is not something that it, it only applies to one generation or another. Uh, the concern about, well, I write my name at different every time, dad. Oops, that was a little personal with my son. Right? Like they, that's how it is. And, uh, uh, so this is a concern going forward. Uh, and part of the ways that we're working to mitigate that, that risk is, is by, uh, increasing frankly, that if, if there's a, the number of ballots that go to the signature curing process. If there's a question at all on what's on that envelope and what's on the voter registration screen, then really there's no question and that ballot's going to go to the signature curing process. So we can contact the voter and confirm that that in fact was their, their signature on it. Uh, so you'll notice going forward that, that's going to be a much larger number of, of ballots that go through the signature curing process, uh, than, than we have historically. And, and again, as we were just talking about, historically, it's, it's still a relatively new process to begin with. So as we work to refine it, as we implement the provision of Assembly Bill 321 that requires signature verification training, uh, for every staff member that's, that involved in the administration of elections, uh, this is something that will just continue to get better and more secure as we continue to work through it.
Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, I have a question. As far as the, the automatic registration process now, I go to the DMV to register my car. What is the, the verification process to make sure that I'm an eligible voter?
You want to?
After you.
So the verification process, um, for them, they're collecting the information and they're sending it to us. Um, so typically the person who's doing, uh, transaction at the DMV, most of the time have a driver's license or a Nevada ID card. Um, it is required to come through with their information that comes to us in our database. If it's missing, it'll flag in our system saying, hey, we have missing information here. Please reach out to the voter, um, to get more information. Um, so that's, there's.
And if I could interrupt you, missing what? What would it take for it to be missing for you to flag it?
Um, driver's license or a social, two last four of your social security numbers. One of those, one of those is required, uh, to register to vote. Um, there are cer- minimal circumstances where somebody has not been issued one. Uh, in that case, uh, we would, uh, issue them a unique identifier in place of the social security number or the driver's license. That is extremely rare that that occurs. Most people have at least a, a social security card and they can provide us with the last four of their, their social.
So if I'm not eligible to vote, but I have a driver's license, then you've got my number. How, then what's that step? How, what's the catch on that side to make sure that I'm, I'm not voting?
So you're, you're not eligible, um, so you have like a DAT card or something else. Um, we wouldn't, we're not, we don't even get that information anymore. Um, they don't even, the DMV doesn't even send it. It doesn't. So the DMV, um, all the information, all the data goes through the Secretary of State's office and is parsed off to each of us counties. Um, so yeah, that's.
Yeah, they, they, Mark Velasquez for the record, they don't transmit, um, registrations for individuals who are not eligible. So exactly with a DAT card, for example, uh, or if it's missing key parts, they, they won't transmit that to the Secretary of State's office.
Okay. All right. Thank, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, I, I just want to say, city council head of what we do and what we do as a city, we just want to do our best to help. There, there obviously is some people, uh, out there who question this a lot and that's part of why you're doing all the work. We appreciate it. How, how can we help? And I say that, one, we obviously offer our staff, we want to make sure we're involved and we, we feel like it's our, at least I say this, I feel like it's our responsibility because then we're hiring or we have an MOU with you, which means that we want to be there to help make sure this is secure. But it sounds like there's just a lot of information that needs to continue to be pushed out to our city. Our responsibility is anybody in the City of Sparks that they never have to question their vote and they feel very solid about what's happening. And that would be our goal is that we have no one doing that. So we want, we want to be a help. We want to make sure that we're involved where we can, where that makes sense. And I say that more of our staff than, we don't really get to do that, but our staff. So, so with that said, I, that's our hope, but is there anything in particular that you can say, hey, you guys, this city, thank you for coming alongside, being a part of our team. How, how can we help you? Do what our goal is.
I think some of the important things, like I said, is, is communication to the citizens. Um, however, we can push out correct information. Uh, i- i- it's really important, um, so people aren't confused, they aren't getting wrong information and unfortunately following it. Um, some of the, some of the, the access that you guys have to either, you know, some media outlets or to, um, just supporting our elections, um, as we, as we work through it. Um, well, you know, I've already been talking to, to Lisa, we're, we're kind of forming a little working group. Um, we haven't met yet once because of the holidays, but we, we, I think we have something on the schedule really soon. Uh, so it's important to us to have community partners too, to have other agencies that, that we're partnering with. Again, it's, you know, building that strength and, and confidence for our voters that what we're doing is, um, their, their, their ballots are secure and they're getting counted correctly. So those are the things that we want to promote, um, again, providing the information, uh, of, you know, just even people, where people can go to vote, information like that, um, for early voting or on election day. Uh, so anything that we can do, again, that you guys have questions that, hey, my, my constituents are coming to us and saying that they don't know, they can't find this information, let us know and we'll get it on our website. And you guys can link to our website too, if you want to do it that way or, um, maybe there's, there's definitely, I think information is really important, is just getting it out there. Uh, because a lot of people, I don't think they want to, um, not trust, but they just don't know what to believe when there's so many different voices out there these days. So the other way you can help also, I mean, you know, offering, uh, your staff and everything else is just also, uh, you know, getting community partners, um, even observers to go to polling locations, um, volunteer. If you have anybody who wants to be an election worker, uh, that's a good way for people to get involved and actually learn some of the behind the scenes things that, that we do to make our elections, uh, go smoothly. So those are also good suggestions for somebody, um, who might be not really sure about things and say, hey, go volunteer. Well, it's paid, you know, go become an election worker or go observe at a polling locations. Uh, those are important, um, things for us because we get feedback from those. Um, a lot of the organizations that, you know, have observers that they organize, we get a lot of good information from them and we can correct stuff if something's not going right. If, as soon as we know, we can get on it and start correcting it. Um, if we don't know about it, we can't, we can't do anything about it. So that's really important that our observers are out there, um, even just voting citizens as they're waiting in line. If they see something they don't agree with, they can contact us and, and we'll look into it and make sure that, that these things get addressed quickly.
When do you start signing up for all that? When do you start for poll watchers and all of that fashion?
Well, we don't, we don't organize the observers. Um, we just organize the election workers and they can, people can start signing up now. Uh, there's a portal on our website so people can, can reach out to us. Um, we start actually kind of doing a big push, uh, a little bit later, maybe into January. Um, because, yeah, we don't want to get people too excited too soon because then they, they might drop out, but, um, it's definitely, uh, organi- you know, organizing, having your group of people who are going to go observe or become an election worker, I think is really valuable.
Okay. Well, as you can tell, we probably need more information out there. There's a, that was 35 minutes of con- conversation with you guys. So I think there's a general misunderstanding of this big change that we've had. So I'm going to encourage you to keep, keep doing what you're doing, coming out and getting the word out.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming today.
Appreciate your time.
Okay. Now we're going to move on to 11.1. Madam Kirk, you want to read this?
I will, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
This is the second reading public hearing discussion and possible adoption of bill number 2790, an ordinance to amend the final approved plan for the Legends at Sparks Marina. Established sign standards for casinos, modify sign standards for hotels, change multifamily residential density and parking standards, modify parking standards and buffer wall use standards, and provide for other matters related thereto. For a site approximately 148 acres in size, generally located north of I-80, south of Prater Way and west of Sparks Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada, in the NUD New Urban District, Legends at Sparks Marina zoning district. PCN 20-0047 forward slash PD 21-0007.
Good afternoon, Mayor Laszlo and members of the city council. I am Dany Ray with the planning division, here to present this item to you today. I apologize for such a long title. Um, let's see. So this is, it's not showing. Oh, there you go. So this is for the Legends Plan Development, generally located north of I-80, uh, west of Sparks Boulevard, south of, uh, Prater Way and east of the Sparks Marina. It's located in the NUD or New Urban District, uh, Legends Plan Development. And the comprehensive, uh, planned land use designation is MUD, MUC or Mixed Use District, uh, Mixed Use Commercial. And, um, it permits, uh, uses in the tourist commercial or TC zoning district. So we're here today for a number of items, uh, one of which are casino signs. Although casinos have been a permitted use within the handbook since 2006, there's currently no, uh, sign standards for casinos within that handbook. So we're here today to look at, um, providing some of those standards. Um, the proposed sign standards are specifically designed for casinos that are located within the main retail center. All other casinos that would be located outside the main retail center would be subject to the Sparks Municipal Code TC zoning standards for signs. So the specific proposed, uh, casino sign standards for those within the main retail centers, such as for the casino that's currently under construction, or roof mounted sign located on the Port of Cachare that faces the north, open channel wall signs, a monument sign, and up to five wayfinding signs for the casino parking lot. Currently hotel signs located out the, um, outside the main retail center are subject to the handbook sign standards. Uh, they're proposing to change that, to modify it so that the signs are subject to the Sparks Municipal Code TC zoning standards. Now the handbook does allow uses permitted within the TC zoning district, including multifamily, um, uses. The, uh, multifamily density standards, uh, for the TC zoning district uses the MF5 zoning, uh, standards or development standards are a minimum density of 34 dwelling units per acre. Located at this 9.19 acre parcel at the northwest corner of the development, um, they're seeking to lower that density to 24 dwelling units per acre, which is in conformance with the Sparks Comprehensive Plan of a minimum of 24 dwelling units per acre for medium to high density standards. This will allow apartments and townhomes, um, and we, we don't have an application for this yet, but we have been in talks with the developer who is looking at a mix of townhomes and, uh, apartments on that same parcel. And parking standards for the multifamily will conform to the Sparks Municipal Code And for general parking, uh, right now, there's no specific language, um, within the handbook to prevent camping, um, within that development, but there's also no language that allows for overnight parking within the hotels or multi-residential. So this is the proposed language. In no case shall overnight camping be permitted, uh, including in RVs. For a buffer wall use, uh, the proposed language clarifies that buffer walls serve to separate commercial and residential uses. So buffer wall will be required, uh, to separate the multifamily from the commercial use to the south at that 9.19 acre parcel. Um, you recently saw that a few months back for, uh, Windsurfer Drive, because that, that parcel, that 9.1 acre parcel, uh, was assumed to be a commercial development at some point and it most likely won't be. It'll be multifamily. So that buffer wall's not, uh, required at that location. It would be required to the south to separate the RV business from the, um, multifamily. And we have some general housekeeping items. Um, the handbook was originally written in 2006 and has some archaic, uh, language within it, um, that has changed over time and some concepts that are, are no longer, um, uh, applied in the city. So such as the City of Sparks Design Manual, um, that is no longer in existence. It was kind of dissolved and, and morphed into the Sparks Municipal Code at its major update in 2015. So anywhere within the handbook where the City of Sparks Design Manual is mentioned, we're changing that to Sparks Municipal Code for clarification. Special use permit, it's not a term that the city uses any longer, that is, uh, changing to conditional use permit. Site plan review is administrative review. And the transit oriented development corridor plan that's mentioned several times throughout the handbook, um, is removed because that's no longer in existence. So please bear with me as I get into the 10 required findings. I'll try to make this as, uh, quick as possible. Um, so finding PDA is concerned with the consistency with the comprehensive plan and other regulations. This amendment supports goals EV4 and CC1 by enhancing the plan development's placemaking elements and incentivizing the retention and attraction of Legends businesses. Modifications to the location of required buffering will promote continued compatibility between residential and commercial uses, also supporting goal CC1. Modifications to parking standards allowing overnight parking at hotels and residential uses and adjusting the required minimum density for multifamily uses on the northwest parcel allows for a variety of housing types, supporting goals MG2, MG6, and CC1. For finding PDB, the proposed amendments to the handbook do not change the types of land uses permitted within the Legends Plan Development. Therefore, this amendment is consistent. For finding PDC, a fiscal analysis was not required with this amendment because there are no proposed changes to the types of allowed land uses and the parcel affected by the density modification is less than 20 acres. Uh, for findings PDD and PDF. For findings PDD and PDF, the proposed modifications to sign standards are consistent with current sign regulations and will assist with placemaking and site identifications for casino and hotel uses within the Legends Development. Modifying the buffer wall standards provides a buffered separation between residential and commercial uses. And parking standards are modified only to acknowledge the nature of hotel and residential parking needs for overnight parking while reiterating the prohibition against overnight camping at Legends. For finding PDE, there are no proposed changes to the land uses permitted by the handbook and the proposed amendment is not anticipated to have any negative impacts on residents, owners, tenants, or the public. For finding PDG, the limited scope of these proposed amendments allows for the continued efficient development and preservation of the entire plan development. And finding PDH, as discussed for finding PDG above, the proposed amendments are limited in scope, not anticipated to adversely affect lands adjacent to the development. And finding PDI, while there is currently only one proposed casino, oh, I think I, sorry, I didn't hit the page. While there's only currently one proposed casino, the handbook does not limit the number of casinos or hotels that may be developed or opened on the Legends site. The casino and sign regulations will thus apply to all casinos and hotels equally within the planned development. However, modifications to the multifamily density standards only apply to the parcel located at southwest of Lincoln Way and Windsurfer Drive and therefore not intended to solely confer a private benefit upon any person, but to provide a much needed middle housing option for families. PDJ, public notice was given as required by the Sparks Municipal Code and Nevada Revised Statutes. Planning Commission and City Council meetings function as public hearings for this item. As of noon today, staff has not received any public comment or inquiry. So this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. The applicant, David Dawson from Red Development, and representative from the Casino Development, DC Graham from Olympia Gaming, are both here to answer any questions you may have as well.
All right. Questions from the council? None? Okay. No questions, then we're looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson.
Move based on findings A.
Oh, excuse me. Public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry.
All right. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and come back. Now you can go, now that I've caught up.
All right.
And actually, before I even read the motion, I just want to say thank you for all the work you guys did on this. Obviously, there was a lot of work, cleaning everything up and getting, getting the work done. So appreciate that. Now I'll move on to motion. I move based on findings A through J as set forth in staff report to amend the final approved plan for the Legends at Sparks Marina, establish sign standards for casinos, modify sign standards for hotels, change multifamily residential density and parking standards, modify parking standards and buffer wall standards, and provide for other matters related thereto for the site approximately 148 acres in size, generally located north of I-80, south of Prater Way, west of Sparks Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada, in the NUD or New Urban District, Legends at Sparks Marina zoning district.
Mr. Dare.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Go forth and build. All right. Move backwards. Back to 7.34. Presentation changes department director job description highlights the ports of proactively pursuing diversity, equity, and inclusion incentives. Allison.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson and members of the city council. For the record, I'm Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager for Management Services. And I'm here today to talk about some changes that we are making to our department directors' job descriptions around the issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion. By way of brief background, the city council has already stated its commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, specifically in resolution 3391, which established the Sparks Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board. And I'll do a shameless plug here, as Mr. Martini said a while ago, we are still accepting applications for that board through Friday. In that resolution, the city council stated that it is committed to creating a community that celebrates diversity by treating all people with dignity and equity. And when we say diversity, as we've talked about before, we don't just mean race. We mean cultures, ethnicities, nationalities, religions, socioeconomic circumstances, education levels, abilities, sexual orientations, gender identities or expressions, and many other factors that can influence a person's perspective. Before the city council made that express commitment, your department directors began meeting regularly in April of 2021 to talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion and what we as your staff can do. This is kind of the, the 30 mile orbit view, not even the 30,000 foot view, but some of what we have landed on throughout those discussions is that change, especially difficult, lasting cultural change, like what we are trying to achieve, has to start at the top. And, you know, it already has started at the top with city council giving that direction in that resolution. But we think as your senior leadership team that it's time to take that, take that down to the next level, which is us. We also need to acknowledge that diversity is the current reality. You know, the demographic data that the census provided tells us that there's diversity in the community. And, you know, we have roughly 500 full-time employees and no two are exactly, exactly alike. We have diversity. But what we need to do, having acknowledged that, is take responsibility for the future of diversity, equity, and inclusion at the city. What, you know, what we do around these issues today will determine what our culture is like tomorrow. And to develop a culture that we want to see, we need to lead by example. And one way that we can lead by example is to add language around diversity, equity, and inclusion to our own job descriptions. We want to do that to signal to three major audiences that these issues are major priorities for the city. The first audience is yourselves, the mayor and city council. We want you to see that we have taken your direction and your commitment to heart and we are making your commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion our own. We also want to signal to employees at all levels of the organization that these are important city priorities. You know, I think on one end of the spectrum, you have some employees who are probably a little worried about what these initiatives might mean for their average day at work. And we want to show them that, you know, we're not afraid of these issues. We're building them into our own job descriptions and hope that they draw from that, that they don't need to be afraid of it either. And then I think you probably have some employees on the other end of the spectrum that don't really feel like they fully belong. And we want them to see that we are taking this seriously and are taking steps to hopefully build an organization where they will feel safe bringing their whole selves to work. And finally, and most importantly, we want the public to see that we take these issues seriously and that the city council expects its leaders to ensure that anytime a person comes to the city seeking services, they will be treated with dignity and respect. So why job descriptions? You know, I, I, to start, job descriptions, adding this language to our job descriptions is not going to solve all the problems of the world. This is, this is an important step, but it's not the only step. It's one of many to come. But job descriptions are the foundation of performance management. So if we are going to expect our leaders to be leaders for positive change, then it needs to be built into their job descriptions. It also enables us to set clear expectations that our department directors be proactive about equity and inclusion. It's no longer enough to just avoid discriminating. We need to be actively engaged in fostering an inclusive culture. And then again, your leaders need to accept responsibility for the city's future culture around diversity, equity, and inclusion. So the next logical question is, of course, what are we adding? So these next few slides will be paraphrased, but they really do sum up the, the language that HR staff is working on adding to all of your department heads' job descriptions. So we expect department directors to actively participate in meetings, trainings, workshops regarding city diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. We expect department heads to positively represent the city's diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives to both staff and to the public. We expect directors to lead their department's implementation of equitable and inclusive city policies and department-specific hiring procedures. We also expect our department directors to provide equitable evaluation and opportunity to all employees throughout all stages of the employment process, from hiring to performance management to promotional opportunities. We also expect our department directors to ensure that internal and external customers, so employees in other departments and members of the public, are treated with dignity and respect and provided equitable and inclusive access to all city services. We expect our department directors to actively protect persons from underrepresented groups, from harassment and microaggressions. Again, it's not enough to just avoid discriminating. We need to be proactive about what comes next. And finally, we expect department directors to act as a liaison with human resources and other departments to ensure that all voices are heard, to facilitate compliance with diversity laws and regulations, to measure and forecast diversity metrics for their department, and to ensure that staff in their department receives adequate training in selecting, managing, evaluating, and perhaps most importantly, retaining employees from diverse backgrounds. So as I said, HR staff is working on adding that language to all of our department directors' job descriptions, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Question from the council. Everyone jump in once.
Trying to.
Mr. Anderson.
Hey, thank you for your work on this, Allison. And I think it's, I think it's great that we're doing this. I, I really like the direction. Did have one of my constituents voice a concern that in our effort for pursuing diversity, equity, and inclusion, that we're going to change our standards of finding the best candidate for the position. And could you address that, please?
Sure. So our goal in any recruitment is to find the best person for the position. But what we have identified in some positions, I think the position of police officer is the best example because that's the, the position we've made the most changes to, is we had some barriers to, to minimum qualifications that weren't really necessary. And perhaps HR Director Mindy Falk or Police Chief Crawford can, can speak to more details on that if, if you would like. However, that might be a little, a little far afield for this specific presentation. But, you know, we, we want to have the minimum qualifications to, you know, get that first shot at an interview or a civil service exam, be what's actually necessary for the job. And then hire, hire the best candidate. You know, we don't, we don't want to have quotas. That's, that's not what we're trying to achieve. But we are trying to end up with, you know, an internal and external facing culture where everybody does feel welcome. Does that answer your question? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dare.
I think, I think it's obviously great we're speaking about any of these things and just coming. I think as soon as we do, it reminds everybody in the room that we're trying to value them. Whether we know how to or not, it's telling you, hey, we're, we're going to try. We're going to do our best because no one, we'll never understand everyone's language all the time. But I, but I would say, kind of in correlation to what Councilman Anderson just asked, I, I think the goal, and I word it this way, if anybody's out there listening for me in this, is to create the largest bridges to our community where people can come here and work and we get as many people on that stage as possible. And then yes, obviously, we will look at whoever is the best for that job, that's who will be coming. But right now, there's some, it seems to be times that, that people don't understand how to get on that platform to be able to have that audition for the job. So what this does, especially putting it in the job description, as you're putting it out there, it helps people realize, hey, there's, here's the trail to get to us, this is how you get here, and then we'll value when you get here. So I think it's important. I think it's great. I think there's always a balance in any of these things, and so it's going to be a nice balance to, to live out, but it always starts with valuing people. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? What do we need to do on this? Just?
It is just a presentation item. It's not agendized for any action.
All right. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Let's move on to consent items. Anyone wish to pull a consent item? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
I move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.3 as submitted.
Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. 9.1, consideration discussion possible approval of the mayor's appointment to the Sparks Planning Commission from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. Do I have to read every name on there? The list of about 28. My choice was Clara Andriola. This Clara's done a good job for us and filled in a, a partial term, and I think she's just hitting her stride right now. So with that, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to reappoint Clara Andriola to the Sparks Planning Commission for a four-year term ending 12/31/2025.
Ms. Bybee.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you, Clara. 9.2, consideration discussion of possible approval of the mayor's appointment to the Sierra Arts Foundation Board of Trustees from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order, Francine Burge and John Hensu. And I chose Francine to fulfill that position again. Mr. Anderson.
I move to reappoint Francine Burge to the Sparks Trustee on Sierra Arts Foundation Board of Trustees for a one-year term ending December 31st, 2022.
Okay. Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. 9.3, consideration discussion of possible acceptance of the city's annual comprehensive financial report, or ACFA. ACFA?
Schoolwork on that.
That's a new one. For fiscal year 2021, 20 and 21, authorized to distribute the ACFA to interested parties, approval of the city's plans for corrective actions relating to the city's internal auditor's conclusions and recommendations. Mr. Crunk.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, council members. My name is Jeff Crunk. I am your chief financial officer, and today I am presenting the annual comprehensive financial report, otherwise known as the ACFA. So we're learning something new.
I like mine better. ACFA. Like CHA, it's easier.
Right?
It's not the CHA.
Or, or for Mayor Lawson, it is the ACAP. I don't know.
There we go.
The ACFA. So actually, the reason, before I get into the audit and the presentation itself, it is, there is a new name. So this is the same document that we've been preparing, I mean, other than the new accounting rules, but that we've been preparing for decades. And for decades, we have been calling it the, the CFA, if you remember. But that, that acronym, although spelled differently, sounds exactly like a derogatory racial slur that's, I guess, commonly used in South Africa. So that was brought to the attention of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASB. They issued GASB number 98, which basically says, change the name, you know? So the, 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 the words are, are the same, they're just rearranged. So it is now and forevermore will be the annual comprehensive financial report, or ACFA. Or you can call it whatever you like. If I keep calling it the CFA, just forgive 30 years of, you know, habits are hard to break. So what this report is, though, is the, and this is actually one of my two favorite days in the year, in the fiscal year, the, the first one being when we, when we approved the, the final budget, right? And then, of course, today is when we're putting a bow and, and putting to bed fiscal year, you know, the previous fiscal year, and in this case fiscal year 21. So this particular report, the comprehensive So, this particular report, the comprehensive financial report, reason it's called that is because there is a lot of information in here. I think before I said that this is one of the two primary documents that we, we pre, prepare and provide for, for, well, anybody, all our interested party and whoever's interested to, you know, happen to be on our website or whatever. But this is essentially a compliance document, but it does give us an opportunity to, to be transparent. There is a lot of information on here, in here, if you can wade through it, and it, it is just basically all our financial statements, a lot of our policies, a lot of financial notes, statistics, it's just chock full of all kinds of, you know, relatively interesting stuff, especially maybe if you're not having a hard time sleeping. But it's also represents in here the results of our annual audit. And Ida Bailey is our external auditors, and they, we do have Kurt Schlicker here, who's representative for Ida Bailey, and he can certainly answer any questions that you might have related to their procedures or results or, or what have you. This is a lot of work. Probably takes a good piece of five months of work, so I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge some of our own staff, financial services department staff. So, particularly Rick Parton, Derek Heron, Monica Knoll, Wayne Weber, Kayla Neff, and Debbie Kinder, who you remember retired in July of this year, but she certainly played a key role before she retired. So, then getting into the results. So, what I, what I'm seeking approval today is really three items. Accepting the report, authorizing its distribution, as I mentioned before, and approving the federal and state corrective action plans. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice, and I didn't bring my water.
Mr. Abbott's going to help you out.
We'll, we'll blame the, we'll blame the mask. Oh, thank you, sir. Oh, has that ever happened to anybody else? You start talking, you just?
Happens to me all the time.
My goodness. Pardon me. So, the three items I'm asking for you to, you to approve today is, again, accepting the, the ACFER report, this, this wonderful report, authorizing its distribution to our interested parties, and then approval of our federal and state corrective action plans related to the, to the audit findings that, that came out through that process. So, part of the distribution process is kind of something interesting. We always send this in for an award to the Government Finance Officers Association, or the GFOWA. And kind of a fun fact, fiscal twenty, the previous fiscal year from this one that we're presenting, was the fortieth consecutive year that we won that award from the GFOWA. So, fun fact is, I, I looked it up, and if my research was right, we're, we're tied with the cities of North Las Vegas and Las Vegas with the most, the longest consecutive streak for that award. So, fun fact there, it's kind of cool, leading the way with Las Vegas and North Las Vegas. But I, I think we're actually in front of a little bit, but anyway. So, we think this fiscal year twenty-one is also going to be eligible for, to receive that award as well. So, diving right into then what are, what the, the audit results, I'm going to keep my comments brief, they're, they're summarized in the ACFER, as well as the, our corrective action plans are attached to the agenda item in, in your, in your, in your packet today. There was essentially four financial findings and three budget violations. And honestly, I just want to take a time to, these, these are, I often look forward to them. I look forward to getting the, the findings because they give us an opportunity to get better, honestly. So, just in summary, the, the first, the four financial findings, the first one is how, related to how we account for mutual aid resources and expenditures. The second one was related to our process to ensure workers' compensation liability estimates are made accurately, so that's more of an accounting estimate issue. The third financial finding was related to our process to calculate and present major and non-major funds within the ACFER, so it's more of a presentation, how, how it's being presented in this document. And then the fourth one was related to our federal awards, and specifically to, to, if you recall, the CARES Act, CARES Act grant sub-recipient award that we gave to Reno Housing Authority, the notifications that were, that were required, we didn't, we didn't completely do that correct. And, and honestly, that was one we knew was coming at the time. If you recall, the CARES Act was a, was a grant that we were putting, putting together and spending and implementing very quickly. That was still back in the day when, when we were anticipating that everything had to be expended by December thirty-first, and here we were in, in late September and October trying to do these sub, sub-recipient awards. So, we were kind of learning on the fly, so we knew back then that there was going to be a finding related to that, so that, that one didn't come as much of a surprise. But again, an opportunity to, to learn. Then there were the three budget violations, and just again, very briefly, the, two of those were related to expenditures which we found after June thirtieth. And as you well know, in order to augment the budget, we have to come before you, before June thirtieth to augment the budget. So, it's a timing issue that honestly comes, it rears its head almost every year. We try to maintain those and keep them small, but you're, you're well aware of the, the biggest one being the Nevada CARES Campus expenditures related to that campus. It was just an example, we've talked about before and has brought to your attention previously, that those expenditures came late, they came after the fact, and that we were, we came to you to approve those, and there were adequate resources, it was just a timing factor. So, that, that is a budget violation. The third budget violation was related to how we account for, or how we value the beginning fund balances available for augmentation within the Court Administrative Assessment Fund and Parks District Fund. So, that's basically the rolling balances that came into those funds, that was what's available for augmentation, and we miscalculated that based on the inclusion of encumbrances that also rolled at the time. So, again, none of these findings are, in and of themselves, very egregious. There's not, you know, any kind of corresponding, I want to know, result of that violation that's going to impact us dramatically, but we do have to submit our plans of corrective action. How are we going to get better? And essentially, since these are one-time actions or one-time issues, you'll notice in the, in the, in the corrective action plan, like especially with our budget, these are one-time issues. There's a timing issue, and, and we'll try to do better. I mean, sometimes it comes down to that. And, and, you know, not to, you know, sound like we're treating these, these findings light or anything like that, but sometimes, especially like the, the budget violations, when they are one-time issues and we know about the timing issues, there are some structurally inherent problems in the law that, that we have to deal with. So, anyway, that being said, so again, what I'm here today is just to seek your approval, your acceptance of this report, and your approval of the, both the state and the federal corrective action plans. And I think with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And again, Kurt Schlicker from Ida Bailey is also here, if you have any questions for him.
Question from the council. Did a great job explaining it.
As soon as I could talk, right?
And as long as there's no jail time included in.
There is no jail time. I have members on my staff.
We look for that, number one.
One job. Keep me out of jail.
Yep. All right, Mr. Dare.
Yes, I mean, obviously, we have a lot of you guys working very hard on this, so thank you for all your hard work. I move to accept the city's annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. Authorize the chief financial officer to distribute the ACFR to interested parties and approve of the city's plan of corrective actions relating to the city's external auditors' conclusions and recommendations.
Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
You're good for another year.
Thank you for the water again, sir.
Nine point four, consideration discussion of possible acceptance of an internship grant valued at three thousand dollars from the National Association of Government Archives and Records Administration to provide for temporary records management support for the Sparks Fire Department. Chief?
Ms. Torres will start.
Ms. Torres is first.
Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor, council. Julie Torres, your assistant city clerk for the record. We're here today to let you know about a grant that we got to help the fire department with their records management. Back in August, I received an email from Nagara, which is the National Association of Government Archives and Records Administrators, and the clerk's office staff is all members of that group, and they were accepting grant applications for an internship, and the money is paid directly from Nagara to a student, and they want somebody who has some experience with records and maybe wants to go into that field. So, I applied, I asked first. I asked Assistant City Manager McCormick and Fire Chief Reed if they were interested in something like that, because I've been working with Chief Reed for almost five years and prior Chief Maples on getting some records programs started over at the fire department, and they agreed. So, I applied, and we were, we found out two weeks ago that we were the winning recipient of this grant, and we won against all other states. So, our grant was, I thought, well-written and well-deserved. They were very impressed that it was for public safety, and that's how I sold it. And we are going to start accepting, accepting applications in January. We'll get that out there, the information out there, maybe some social media. We want to get students involved in this, get the best applicant that we can, and then we're going to take them over. They'll, they'll report to me because I'm the member of Nagara, and we'll take them over and we'll get them started helping Chief Reed with his records program, and hopefully turn this or some, something like it into a full-time records management spot. In comparison, the fire department doesn't have anybody dedicated to records. That's, that's rough, because like with the police department, they have a team of twelve or more people that are dedicated just to managing their records, and we don't have that for fire. So, we're really wanting to help start build that for them, because it's a lot to take on. There's a lot of rules and laws around records. We've been, I think, trying to support you as much as we can, but it's, it's difficult when there's four people in our office to expend one person entirely. So, I think this is going to be a good opportunity for the chief.
Good afternoon. Jim Reed, your fire chief for the record, and yeah, I want to thank Julie for applying for this grant. It's going to help us kickstart our program and hopefully come in line and make her happy and make the lawyers happy with, with the state NRS. So, I'm really excited about this moving forward, so thank you.
Okay, questions from the council? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
I'm going to go over here and do this now.
You were out there, John. Ms. Bybee.
First of all, I'd like to thank Julie for taking the initiative to apply for a grant, and we love getting grants. Anytime we get money that helps us do what we need to do and improve upon it is always awesome. I had no idea that you didn't, fire didn't have a records administrator, and so I think this, I agree with you, Chief Reed, is a good opportunity to kickstart what is obviously a need. So, with that, I'm going to move to accept the internship grant valued at three thousand dollars from the National Association of Government Archives and Records Administrators to provide temporary records management support for the Sparks Fire Department.
Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Thank you, Julie. Nine point five, consideration discussion of possible approval of changes to the city's Sparks Group Health Plan document to eliminate language on the back-on-track program and to add language to allow continuous glucose monitoring system be, to be paid for through the pharmacy effective January first, two thousand and twenty-two with no fiscal impact. Mindy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Mindy Falk, Human Resources Director. For your consideration today is a change to the city's group health plan for calendar, calendar year two thousand and twenty-two. First, I'm just going to take a second to talk about the process, and then I'll talk about the specific plan changes. The city's group health plan is self-funded, which means the city is in charge of the benefit coverage, so what is paid for or not paid for? To change the city's benefits, there's a two-step process. First, it must go through the group health committee's process, and then it goes to the city council, like today, for, they're recommended to be brought to city council for final approval. Why does the city council have a group health committee? Due to a binding arbitration, the city was required to establish the group health committee. The committee makeup is three voting members, which are operating engineers, police, and fire unions, and five non-voting members, which include the supervisory contracts, the retirees, and the resolutions. The change before you today are two different ones. The first one is to get rid of the back-on-track program. This is obsolete language. In early January of two thousand and twenty-one, the city Sparks was notified that the back-on-track services were no longer being offered by our vendor. The city researched alternative vendors and, but were unable to find a provider. The back-on-track program was designed by the vendor to assist individuals with non-work-related acute back pain. When our program was first introduced, there was a lot of member utilization. However, time, that has diminished, and in the last two years, there's been no members who have utilized the program. So, therefore, removing this language from the plan document is cost-neutral. The second is an update to the plan to be in line with current technology to manage diabetes. Currently, the glucose monitoring systems are paid by the health plan, but not by the pharmacy. There's a new device on the market that supplies, the supplies must be picked up at the pharmacy. This means plan members must pay for the supplies out-of-pocket first and then submit the claim to Hometown Health for reimbursement. If the plan document is changed and these devices are listed on the drug formulary as a tier-two benefit, then the members can receive them and not have to go through the reimbursement process. Because this is already covered under the plan, it's just changing administration issue, there is also no cost to this change. So, a rare time I come with a group health insurance with no change, no costs. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the council? All right, seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
I'm going to approve changes to the city's Sparks Group Health Plan document to eliminate language on the back-on-track program and, and to add language to allow continuous glucose monitoring systems to be paid through the pharmacy effective January first, two thousand and twenty-two with no fiscal impact.
Mr. Anderson.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, you got a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Nine point six, consideration discussion of possible approval of changes to the capital improvement plans for fiscal years twenty-one and twenty-two. Got the tag team here today.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. For the record, my name's Brian Kason, Capital Projects Manager, and also have with me Amber Sosa, the Transportation Manager. We're here today to seek city council approval to make changes to three capital improvement projects that were previously approved by council for, in fiscal year twenty-one and fiscal year twenty-two. The first project I'll just jump right into is fire station number four garage door replacement. This is a project that's within Capital Project Fund, Capital Projects Fund fourteen oh four. We recently received an updated proposal for replacing the garage doors, and we were surprised to see, or maybe not so much surprised, that the cost went up substantially for these doors, which puts us over the budget we had estimated previously eleven months ago. We spoke to maintenance and asked them how long they thought the doors that are on there would last. They, they feel confident that they're in sufficient condition to last another eighteen months, so we are prepared to put that project in the, in the fiscal year twenty-three budget and reallocate the, the money and ultimately update the estimate on that. And then, with that discussion, the fire department staff and maintenance felt that a utilization of the existing money would be to update or repair HPAC systems in the fire station number one and fire station number two. With that, I'd answer any questions on this first one.
All right, questions from the council? You got off easy today.
All right.
No questions, I'm looking for a motion.
Well, we, hold on, we're going to go through, so that was just the first project. So, we have three, three of these capital improvement projects we're going to go through, and so I'm just running through each one, allowing you to have questions in between. The next one is the Deer Park Shade Structure Replacement Project, which is within the Park District One Fund fourteen oh six. I do have a site map here, which will, which will help you to better visualize. Oops, actually, that's not the right one. Let's see. Oh, here's, I believe it's this one here. There we go. So this, the original scope of this project was to remove and replace this structure right here at Deer Park on the corner of Rock Boulevard and Prater Way. As we looked at the, the, the structure and we had staff members out there, we also saw that these, all these structures here were in, in need of some updates and repairs. We had a structural engineer come and look at this structure. And they felt that this was insufficient, sufficient condition and safe and just needed to be, could basically be updated with some graffiti removal and remove some bird pieces and stained and, and updated. So with that, we looked at what we could do with all these other structures and really go through and update the, the entire core of the park right here. So we had five items that staff is proposing to update within the park. The first item would be to remove a portion of this pergola and restain it. The next item would be to update the existing restroom with paint and updated interior, like sinks and faucets. And then the next item would be to remove the barbecue within this structure and infill the existing open roof. And then we would restain all these structures. And lastly, would update some of the concrete panels that are cracked and damaged out there. I do have some pictures to help you visualize what we're, we're talking about. So this is the pergola. We would remove this lower section and a portion of the, the west side of it that's, that's near the, near the pool. This would minimize, you know, to jump up on top of it and minimize some safety issues. And then we would restain it and of course, replace any of these board members that would, that are damaged during. And then, secondly, as you can see, the restroom, the doors need to be painted. There's some interior paint that needs to be done, repair some of the interior finishes. The third item is this barbecue is in poor condition. It minimizes visual, the visual capacity of the police staff, Police Department to go by and see within this, this structure. So we've removed that, removed these interior columns, infill the roof structure and restain it. And then, of course, replace any concrete panels that, that are damaged during this process. This structure is like a bandstand that we've restained. And then here's the one we originally looked at to remove and replace. You can see there's some vertical cracks in the columns, but those are really large timbers. They're, they're, that building is really stout. We would just clean up the graffiti and, and ultimately restain the, the structure and replace any concrete panels that, that need to be replaced. And then lastly, here's just an example of one of the concrete panels or a couple of concrete panels we have replaced during this process. These changes in scope from the original project would, we feel would better utilize the funding and provide enhanced visibility, improve safety, and ultimately improve the aesthetic appeal of the park. With that, I'd answer any questions on that, that particular project.
Rabbit.
I know like the block S program at Sparks High School has adopted the park as a whole. Are they able to maybe help with the staining or something? I don't know how, I don't know if they can get involved and help out.
I'm not sure how that process works, but we could certainly look into it and see if they would be willing to, to help.
Yeah, just send a way for the kids to get involved. So, thank you.
Is there any thought about increasing lighting and things there as part of this?
And, and we are planning on adding lighting to each, the inside of each of those shade structures that are there. So that, the idea is to improve safety so the police can, can monitor that and see inside of there and not have obstructions that are.
That was my question. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions?
The last one is Amber Wolf.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. The third project that we are recommending changing in the CIP is, you may recall, in March of 2021, we did a proposal for the FY22 CIP workshop. And I presented to you a plan, a five-year plan for our drainage and roadway program. This is a program that is a collaboration between the Utility Division and the Transportation Division where we're addressing neighborhood streets that have deteriorated drainage infrastructure. Basically, it's so deteriorated, we're having a hard time getting the water off the roadway. I'm very excited to tell you that what you see towards the middle, this G Street and Shriver, we, we paved out last week. We got in before the storms. We're very excited. But this was our five-year plan. Normally, what we would do is we would finish a neighborhood before we would jump to other sections. But when we were putting this plan together last March, Stanford rose to the top, not only because of the drainage infrastructure, but it also had a sewer issue. Since then, the Utility Division has had great success with their CIPP, their Cure Don Place Pipe Program. And that sewer issue is no longer an issue. So all of these projects that you see here are in the same need for their drainage infrastructure. So the change that we're proposing is simply what you see down here to the left, just a reorg of the timelines. With the completion of this neighborhood right here, we'd like to complete these other three in the light blue, dark blue, and orange. Then we would come back to Stanford and then we'd continue on with the project. So again, all the same projects, just in a different timeframe. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question from the council? Okay. I guess we're ready for a motion then. Mr. Abbott.
I move to approve the proposed changes to the capital improvement plans for fiscal years 2021 and 2022.
Mr. Dare.
Second.
Got a motion and second any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Most carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
9.7, consideration discussion of possible acceptance of the advice and recommendations provided in Resolution Number 7 from the Sparks Tourism Facility and Revitalization Steering Committee regarding the expenditure of up to $900,000 in lodging tax proceeds or support in the FY22 Downtown Barricades Project Phase 2. Amber.
Mayor, members of council, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. So this item is asking you to consider the advice and the recommendation from the Sparks Tourism Facility and Revitalization Steering Committee, also known as the Lodging Tax Committee. Per Chapter 432 of the Nevada statutes, a tax of 2.5% is applied to all lodging in Sparks. The City of Sparks Council may expend those proceeds after obtaining the advice and the recommendation from the Lodging Tax Committee. In July of 2021, the committee met and they agreed upon two items related to this topic. They voted to amend the Victorian Square Master Plan to include safety improvements for the area. And they voted to approve Resolution Number 7. This resolution advises the City Council to expend up to $900,000 of lodging tax funds for the FY22 Downtown Safety Barricades Project Phase 2. And today's item is asking you to accept that resolution. Event safety and security for special events continues to be a high priority for the City of Sparks. Tragic events such as the one that we recently saw in Wisconsin show continued need to protect our visitors at our special events. In staff's view, the proposed FY22 project is necessary and needed to further mitigate threats of violence. The City of Sparks completed the FY20 Downtown Safety Barricade Project Phase 1 in May of 2020. That project included in-ground barriers, the mobile trailer barriers, as well as numerous fixed and mobile bollards. Phase 2 is proposing to use the same equipment. So this map that you're seeing is what we were able to accomplish with Phase 1. Towards the east side, near Victorian and Pyramid, we have the in-ground, the in-ground barricades. You'll see numerous labels with fixed and removable. Those are referencing the different kind of bollards. And then we have a couple, a couple dots with the mobile. Those are those mobile trailers, not necessarily in-ground there, but we can move them. To the right, you'll see the picture of our in-ground bollard, or in-ground barricades at that location. And these are the, the more, sorry, the higher crash-rated barricades. They withstand the 50 mile an hour vehicle towing. The bottom is one of our mobile trailers. And up top, you can see what they look like in their towed version and what they look like deployed. Some pictures of the removable and the fixed bollards. And you'll see down here, these little black dots, these are the removable bollards. And you see that we've stored them in a different area and they can simply be moved and popped into place when we need to close this driveway. Up here near the Mexican Restaurant is another example of that. You'll see the bollards in their resting space. And then when we need to close that, we can move them into, into their black sleeves. These are the proposed locations for Phase 2. So again, you'll see the, the blue dots are what we're in Phase 1. And you'll see that we're moving west with Phase 2. Notably down here at 4th and Victorian Plaza Circle and 14th, I apologize, 14th. This is the entrance to our downtown special events corridor from the other side. So this will be a system of the in-ground barricades as well. The other circles are a combination of bollards, both fixed and removable, as well as the mobile trailers. The city's Victorian Square Lodging Tax Fund has an ending balance of just over $3.8 million. The commitments for these funds are approximately 1.1. So the fund does have the financial capacity to support this project. Should council approve the advice being presented from the committee, the expenditure will come through separate actions that will come before you at future council meetings. These are the items such as the equipment purchase, the installation contract, and material testing and inspection support contracts. We're expecting these to come to you in early 2022. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amber. Obviously, the security of downtown for all of our special events is critical. And I'm so excited to see that we've completed Phase 1 and that we're ready to do Phase 2 and that we have the lodging tax to do that. So I am happy to make a motion. I move to accept the advice and recommendation provided in Resolution 7 from the Sparks Tourism Facility and Revitalization Steering Committee regarding the expenditure of up to $900,000 in lodging tax proceeds for the support of the fiscal year 2022 Downtown Barricade Project Phase 2. Sorry, this is moving all around on my screen, so I think I got it. Barricades Project Phase 2. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think this really got drove home with that Christmas parade in Wisconsin and just how important this is for protecting our citizens. So I'm glad that we, we pursued this over these great many years. With that, please vote. And most carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Amber. 9.8, consideration discussion approval of purchase of a spare centrifuge conveyor bowl assembly and feed tube for the Alpha Laval Inc. for the Tricky Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in the amount not to exceed $176,832.83.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. For the record, Kim Labor, Tomworth Maintenance Manager. I have sent in a picture. We'll see if it's here. If it's not here, I did bring a photo that I can put up on the screen here. It probably won't be as, as good a resolution, but you can see what I'm talking about. There we go.
That was exactly what I thought it would look like.
So the item before you is a request to approve the purchase of a spare centrifuge bowl and scroll from Alpha Laval Inc. in the amount of $176,832.83. So that we can kind of understand what I'm talking about in a centrifuge. If you think about the old salad shooter or salad spinner, you put your lettuce and vegetables in a bowl and you put a lid on it and have a handle and you spun it. That's the sort of thing a centrifuge does. It separates the water from the material that's in there. And this, the centrifuge for us essentially does the same thing. The difference between like a salad shooter and the Tomworth centrifuges is the salad shooters is a batch and it's hand speed. Whereas the Tomworth process is a continuous feed at 125 gallons a minute and the centrifuge is spinning at 4,000 RPMs. So the Tomworth centrifuges are used to de-water the digester sludge prior to being transported to the landfill. The de-watering process significantly reduces the amount of material that is sent to the landfill. Digested sludge that goes into the centrifuge is 98% water and only 2% solids. The spinning action of the centrifuge separates the water from the solids and produces what we call cake or bio solids. And so that large volume of water that's in there is sent back to the Tomworth process. And the sludge that comes out is kind of the consistency of like dough before you break your baked bread. And that, that material is what is sent to the landfill. So we significantly reduce the material sent to the landfill and it saves us costs in transportation and the landfill tipping fees. So Tomworth uses two of these centrifuges that were installed in 2014. Both centrifuges operate 24/7, 365 days of the year. They're at their point in their service life where they need to be sent out for off-site servicing. That takes between three and four weeks to get done. But we can only be without this centrifuge for like three or four hours. And you'll see that it's currently out. It was out for three days. We had to put new bearings in it, but we had to get it back in service. By purchasing this third bowl and scroll, it will give us the ability to rotate the centrifuges out for service. And then we can rotate one in and we always have two centrifuges up and operating. The replacement parts are proprietary to Alpha Laval, so this did not go out to bid. And also, this was an anticipated expense in the 22 fiscal year budget for Tomworth, so it was anticipated. And lastly, Spark share of this purchase is $55,472.46. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson.
I move to approve the purchase of a spare centrifuge conveyor bowl assembly and feed tube from Alpha Laval Inc. for Tricky Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in the amount not to exceed $176,832.83.
Mr. Abbott.
Second.
Got a motion and a second any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Most carries unanimously. Thanks, Kim. And retirement upcoming shortly.
Shortly, yep. My wife is pushing me out the door.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 9.9, consideration discussion of possible approval of an expenditure of $420,852.37 to purchase a One Gap Vax MC1005-3XX3 combination jet vac on a 2003 Peterbilt 548 chassis from Wiko Industries utilizing Sourcewell Contract 122017-GPV. All right, thanks for the technical title there, Ron.
I apologize for that. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of council, Ron Corman, Public Works Maintenance Manager. As you mentioned, I'm here for you, before you today to ask your permission to fund an expenditure of $420,852.37 to purchase another sewer cleaning truck as depicted on the photographs on your monitor. This is very similar to trucks that we already have in our fleet. It is a different brand than we've used before. However, the function of it is, is identical. This is replacing a truck that was purchased in 2005, a Freightliner, that is just a single-use flusher. And so in this truck, what you can see is on the very front of it, you can kind of see what looks like a big giant thimble, that is the hose reel. This truck has a capacity of holding 1,000 feet of line at 1 inch, 1,200 feet of line at 3/4 inch. So basically, we'll be able to run out a quarter mile to clean sewers. The snorkel part that you see over the top is the addition that we're getting in this vehicle over the one that we're replacing in that this vehicle has the ability to draw material out of catch basins and other types of infrastructure. material out of catch basins and other types of infrastructure here in the city. We are purchasing this, or we would be purchasing this through a Sourcewell contract. Contract number, as you mentioned before, one twenty-two oh one seven GPV. And this expense was programmed in this current fiscal year 22 Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Plan. With that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
All right. Questions from the council? And the answer is no, Donald, you cannot drive it.
Any questions from the council? I don't see any, so with that, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
Yeah. I'll put my glasses on here. I move to approve an expenditure of four hundred twenty thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents to purchase one Gap Vax MC one zero zero five dash three SX three combination jet vac on a 2023 Peterbilt five-four-eight chassis from Wiko Industries utilizing Sourcewell Contract one two two dot zero one seven dash GPV.
Ms. Bybee.
I'll second that motion.
Hey, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Most carries unanimously. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you. I would also like to add that our vendor in this case is Wiko Industries. They called us on Friday morning and said that they got hit with a 20% price increase through Peterbilt. However, they chose not to pass that price increase to the city, and so I just wanted to just take a moment and thank them for considering our situation as well. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to ten point one, public hearing. Discussion and possible approval of resolution number three three nine five, adopting the revised land use assumptions, capital improvement plan, and imposition of impact fees for impact fee area one, I believe. Yep, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council Members, John Erickson, City Engineer. Joining me here today is Ian Crittenden, our Development Services Manager. We are going to be presenting the the update to the Capital Improvement Plan for impact fee service area number one. I've taken the liberty to take my four-hour presentation and reduce it down to two hours, so bear with me on that.
Let's cut that down some more.
Okay.
Like three minutes.
Okay. Well, does anybody have any questions? I guess we're gonna...
Speak fast.
The purpose for the update is to include the Five Ridges project that we've entered into a development agreement. They requested to be included in I F S A number one. Where I F S A is located is out in Northern Sparks. This is the 2018 boundary, which is the current boundary that we have in impact fee service area number one. And this map shows the inclusion of the Five Ridges project, which is approximately a little over four hundred and twenty acres that would be added into I F S A number one. Just a little bit of background on on the program. It was developed back in 1992 as the city was starting to take vision of developing Northern Sparks, and it really was the Northern Sparks Sphere of Influence, or N S S O I Plan. That plan originally had 7,200 acres associated to it, and the plan included a mix of land uses, which is similar to what we have in the Impact Fee Service Area Number One Plan. Originally, the N S S O I Plan had five components in the in the program. There was sewer, storm drain, parks and rec, fire stations, and then it also included regional roads. But in 1997, when the fees were being reviewed, the road component was taken out because in 1996, the Regional Transportation Commission developed the Regional Road Impact Fee Program, which Dale Keller will be presenting on the next item. So that was removed, so we just have four components that we pay for out of Impact Fee Service Area Number One. So in the the review of the program, we reviewed the land use assumptions, and Ian will will give you a kind of a brief update on what he goes through to make sure that the land uses correspond to the update. Then the project identification, or this is where we go back and look at the approved C I P that's in I F S A number one, and remove components that were constructed so that when we recalculate the fees, we just don't have those added quantities. The the big one with with regards to this update is reviewing project costs. You can imagine that some of the material costs for the the program have gone up and the development that has occurred through December 31st of 2020. There are two residential components to the land use types, and there are seven non-residential. With that, I'll let Ian kind of step through the the analysis.
Mayor Lawson, members of the council, Ian Crittenden, your Development Services Manager. So this is a pretty tedious but but not overly complicated process that we go through every year, or every three years is how often this needs to be updated, obviously. We're a little early this year because of the addition of Five Ridges. But basically, what we do, as John has indicated, is we go through and we look at what projects need to still be done, and and then we look at how many units do we have left to share that cost across them. So that's kind of becomes my my portion of this. I go through and look at all the final maps that have been approved, commercial projects that have been approved, as well as any multifamily projects that have been approved, and and keep a tally, keep a a a record of of all of those are done, so we know how many development units we have left. With with the majority, if not all, of Impact Fee Service Area One being in planned developments, we have a really good idea of what the actual number of units are supposed to be out in those areas, because those those handbooks have have total number of units dictated in them. And so we can use those numbers to to kind of count off or tick off the the units that have been done. We've also do some pretty in-depth analysis of how how things are building out. So if we know that, you know, a certain development has been coming in below their maximum build-out units, you know, they've been building at 75% of their maximum units, then we don't count 100% of the units in that development, because it's not a realistic number that we're trying to share that cost across. We want to, we want to try to get as close to on the nose of the number of units we have left and and how much project we have left to do so that we can get those numbers to be as equal as we we can. So basically, it's it's pretty, and I say this, you know, knowing that it's very true, very basic accounting. It's nowhere the level of Jeff Kronk's accounting levels, but I'm just accounting for for service units, both residential and commercial, and what's been built and what do we have left to build to to share the cost across.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Just as a reminder, this is an impact fee. It's a one-time fee to construct the the improvements for sewer, storm drain, parks and rec, as well as provide funding for a fire station. It cannot be applied towards operation, maintenance, repairs, alterations, or replacement of those facilities that were constructed. So jumping into the facility maps, the the there's there's two interceptors. There's the Northwest Interceptor and the Northeast Interceptor. All of these improvements have have been constructed. We're just currently paying the bond back on on the sewer improvements based on the proportional share of what's being contributed to or from I F S A number one. Then this is the flood control facility map. This is what we refer to as Reach Nine. This goes up through Pioneer Meadows and then over into Stone Brook West. This facility is has been constructed, but technically is not in the program, or still in the program due to the fact that we do not have a impact fee credit agreement. Those will be coming before you, I would say, in the first quarter of next year. And then we've got one last piece down in the Aratza Ball Ranch location, so when, if and when the Aratza Ball Ranch gets constructed, those improvements will be built. We've got a regional trail map. The the trails in black have been constructed. Trails in red are are what is being calculated for for the fees. I will indicate that this this is where the the lion's share of of the increase is coming from. The the regional trail costs have almost doubled, or not the not not the fee, but just the cost to construct the regional trails. When when I looked at calculating the the overall cost of the the trails, we had this portion of a impact fee credit agreement that came in from D.R. Horton, and so that's what based, that's how I based the the new fee for the regional trails. We just, or you, council just approved an impact fee credit agreement with Toll Brothers, and and that, we were within a couple of dollars of of what Toll Brothers was asking for with regards to their credits. So I feel very confident that the number that we've created or calculated for the regional trails is accurate. And then the last item here is fire station map. Mr. Martini is currently working with the developers in both Kiley Ranch North, as well as in Pioneer Meadows, to try to determine the location of Fire Station Six. So just to give you an idea of the outreach that that we went through, we reached out to the Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee. That's a committee that's comprised of developers and a contractor. When I presented this information to them, they they understood the the reasoning for where the fees landed, you know, with this this update. The A G C, or Associated General Contractors, as well as BAN, the Builders Association in Northern Nevada, they had a question with regards to the to the fees, and and once I explained to them what what the situation was, they they understood the reasoning behind where the fees landed. When we met with the A G C, there was actually a a developer that that we we presented this the same presentation to, and and she she indicated that, you know, she understood it, you know, when a sheet of plywood two or three years ago was 30 bucks and now it's 100 dollars. You know, she just, she understood that material costs and labor costs are just going up and that we just need to stay, stay ahead of it. The the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, which is the Planning Commission, on October 21st of this year forwarded a recommendation of approval to the City Council unanimously. If the resolution is adopted by council today, the the fees will go into effect January 1 of 2022. And just the affecting fee or factors that are affecting the fees, it's the addition of Five Ridges with that 428 acres added in. The land use and acreage has gone up, and then there's, like I've indicated earlier, it's increasing construction costs. So as you can see, the the fees for single-family and multifamily will be going up approximately 3, 300 dollars for the, or just under 300 dollars for the single-family, and just over 200 dollars for the multifamily. That concludes my presentation. Are you happy to answer any questions?
Questions from the council? Okay. You did a great job, Tom.
I just would like to remind you that this is a public hearing.
Are you getting back at me for giving...
No, I'm not getting back at you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll pull it back to the dice. Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to approve resolution number three three nine five, adopting the revised land use assumptions, capital improvements plan, and imposition of impact fees for impact fee service area number one, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Mr. Dare.
I second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donald.
Ten point two, second reading, public hearing, discussion of possible action of bill number two seven eight seven to amend chapter 12.44 Regional Road Impact Fee of the Sparks Municipal Court, and approve the Regional Road Impact Fee General Administrative Manual Capital Improvements Plan and impact fees as revised by the Regional Transportation Council Commission of Washoe County on October 15, 2021, and providing for other matters related thereto.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council Members, John Erickson, City Engineer, for the record. We'd like to introduce Dale Keller with the Regional Transportation Commission. Dale is going to walk you through the seventh edition. You may recall back in 2018, Julie Masterpool was before you with this presentation for the sixth edition. Since then, Julie has had the opportunity to retire, so now it's Dale's turn to start taking over the Regional Road Impact Fee Program. So with that, I would like to introduce Dale.
Thank you, John. So good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Dale Keller, Engineering Manager with the R T C. So today, I'm here to present the Regional Road Impact Fee, or RIF, seventh edition update. So big picture, why are we doing the RIF update? It's, the RIF program needs to conform with our 2050 Regional Transportation Plan, or the R T P, that was adopted in March of this year. So the RIF program uses its transportation efforts to identify the list of capital improvements necessitated by and contributed to new development. So before we jump into the proposed changes, and as a refresher, the Regional Road Impact Fees is a funding tool for collecting the cost of new development's capacity demand on our regional road. So for example, new development comes online. In this case, the city sparks through the building permit process, collects those impact fees. Those funds are then transferred to the R T C, and we use those funds to expend on our, and improve capacity on our regional roads. So the the program has its advantages and its limitations. Some of the advantages is development's way to pay its fair share, its view as an equitable system supported by the community. There are limitations. Impact fees must be used on capacity improvements, cannot be used on operating costs, maintenance costs, or non-capacity improvements. This program is governed by N R S two seven eight B, which allows local governments to enact impact fee ordinances to administer this program. Each agency, so the city of Sparks, city of Reno, Washoe County, and R T C entered into a four-party interlocal cooperative agreement that outlines those roles responsibilities. The program has two components, the first one being the capital improvement plan, or the C I P, which describes the methodology for establishing the cost per our service fees. And the second, the last one here, is the General Administrative Manual, which provides the guidelines and procedures to administer the program. So the update before you today is in accordance with those provisions of the interlocal cooperative agreement, where R T C is responsible for this periodic review of our RIF program. Like I said in the beginning, we need to be in conformance with our long-term transportation plan, or the 2050 R T P. In addition, as you'll see in the last bullet point, is the participation with our RIF Technical Advisory Committee, or the T A C, or the TAC. So for over a year now, they're providing input and guidance through this process, and that comprises of members of a local staff, members of the Planning Commission, as well as representatives from the development community. So the, this slide shows a simple diagram of outlining the three major steps to defining the RIF fees. The first one starts with in red, which is the T M R P A, or the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agencies, land development model, determining where the known land use assumptions are, so where and what type and where growth will occur. Step two is in green, where we talk where the R T C planning comes involved with the travel demand model, as well as the regional transportation plan. And the last step in blue is with the RIF program, determine the new development's share of cost for those capacity improvements. And you see in the last box in the bottom right is that impact fee rate and fee schedule. So I'll spend just a quick second here on those three steps. The first step is to estimate the growth over the 10-year period. We use the consensus forecast for population employment through T M R P A's development model, and then we convert growth to vehicle mile of travel, or V M T, to establish that relationship between that supply, which is our roadway capacity, and demand, which is the traffic generated by new development. So step two, we use our R T C's travel demand model to understanding what is the average trip length on our regional roads. So we tease out the trips on our regional roads. So here's an example, even though if you have a a trip that started in the Spanish Rings area and you want to get to North Sparks area, we only account for the areas in dark blue on our regional road network. So now we have the growth in V M Ts, and the next step of this is calculating the cost of these improvements. So we use the 10-year time period from our 2050 Regional Transportation Plan to identify where this growth is going to occur and the projects associated with that. The last step, and step three is the RIF program. We have two service areas, so impact fees must be reasonable size to show the benefit of each improvement. So if we collect money in the North Benefit District, money has to be spent in that North service area. So we take all those inputs, and the last step here, we calculated, calculate the... And the last step here, we calculate the dollars per V M T for R I F shares. We understand for the next ten years, the R I F share is over a hundred and thirty-two million dollars. We apportionate that where the growth is going to occur between the North and South. And you see in the bottom row, we get the dollars per V M T. So, once we establish the dollars per V M T, we establish the R I F fee schedule for the designated land uses. This slide shows the fee schedule for the residential as well industrial. You notice on the far right, under the green column, the difference between the seventh and the sixth edition were roughly flat besides from our single unit on our residential land use. That is because we are traveling further, and I'll touch upon that in a second. And here's a reminding of the fee schedule showing commercial land uses, as well as office and other uses. So, once again, relatively flat. To summarize these changes and to summarize the update, the R I F C I P projects now reflect what's included in our 2050 R T P. The R I F fees reflect more growth in the North Benefit District than in the South Benefit District. The third bullet point here is updated vehicle data. So, we are driving further. Now, that has a direct relationship on the fees increase for a single-unit residential family or land uses. And this was actually a very specific calculation for our region. So, we take the total number of vehicles with Washoe County, and we take that data collected by the U S Census Bureau to calculate the number of trips determined by single-family residents. Also, the last two points here is some clarity and conformity of some key terms in our General Administrative Manual. And we also updated the appeals process for fee payers. So, as John alluded to, very similar to the last impact fees that was discussed, we went through the Planning Commissions and for City Sparks, as well as the other agencies unanimously recommended approval. So, this month, as well as now into January, we're going to each of the agencies requesting adoption of the ordinances. And we're looking for a January implementation of the new fee schedule. With that, I'll help you to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? None? Okay, looking for a motion? Or we got a public hearing first? Public hearing.
I don't want to jump on like John Erickson did. I'll give you the time.
It's okay, I got big shoulders. This is a public hearing. We're wishing to open it up to the public now. Anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll close it and bring it back to the dais. Looking for a motion? Anybody? Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to approve Bill Number two-seven-eight-seven to amend Chapter one-two-point-four-four Regional Road Impact Fee of the Sparks Municipal Code and approve the Regional Road Impact Fee General Administrative Manual Capital Improvements Plan and impact fees as revised by the Regional Transportation Commission Washoe County on October fifteenth, 2021, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Mr. Anderson.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Item twelve-point-one, comments from the public. Anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time? I don't have any cards. Okay, we're done with that. Comments, announcements from the Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Mr. Manager, you have anything?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anyone on the council have anything? Of course.
Of course. Well, I'm sure everyone else.
This is your last meeting for this year.
I know, that's why I said.
Make it good.
We have to say, we hope you have an incredible, happy holidays, all that. I know we're not going to have another meeting. But it's such an honor to work with all you, just to our staff. And to our public that's out there, I'll just tell you, please be safe, be kind, and slow down. Slow down. Anyway, it's an awesome time.
Anyone else? We'll get to you in a second here. We pass you over for a public comment? Dale? You got to wave your hand. I'm a little bit hard of seeing and hearing. So, we'll back up to comments from the public. Come on up, Bill. Good thing you got the ski pole. It's going to snow later.
Thank you. Preparing for the slopes.
Yep.
For the record, my name is Bill Wagner. Mr. Mayor and Mr. and Mrs. Councilpeople, I have only one question, really. And if we went back to nine-point-three, which was that? Let me go to it so I can read it right. A C F R. Book? Is there any way that a citizen like myself could get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Right.
We just approve that so that can be distributed.
Oh, that's true.
Jeff's holding one out for you right now.
Otherwise, he's got to carry it.
I got a lot of homework to do. Thank you. Thank you all very much. And I've got one other question for John over here. But I'll wait for that one.
All right. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
And have a happy holiday, Bill.
Happy holidays to you folks.
All right, anyone in the council have any other announcements, comments? Okay, with that, we're on to Item thirteen, adjourned. We are adjourned. And we're going to take five minutes.
Yeah, we're going to take five minutes to get the Redevelopment Agency agenda up and operating. So, a five-minute break, and then, we'll start. Okay. Who are we waiting for? Where's Donald? Up, Donald. I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of Monday, December thirteenth, 2021, with a roll call.
Chairperson Bybee?
Here.
Agency members Abbott?
Here.
Vanderwell?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
Acting Chief Legal Officer Duncan?
Here.
Acting Chief Administrative Officer Martini?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item three, three-point-one, public comment. Do I have any public comment? I'm not seeing any publics, so I would say let's close that. Agenda, four-point-one, approval of the agenda. Ms. Vanderwell?
I move to approve the agenda.
Mr. Dare?
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item five-point-one, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting for November twenty-second, 2021. Okay, Agency Member Abbott?
I move to approve the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting for November twenty-second, 2021.
Agency Member Lawson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item six-point-one, consideration and possible acceptance of the report of the claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of November sixth, 2021, through November thirtieth, 2021. For action? Agency Member Dare?
I'm going to accept the report, claims and bills, and the appropriation transfers for the period of November sixth, 2021, through November thirtieth, 2021.
Agency Member Anderson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item seven-point-one, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a construction contract in the amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-seven with Sierra Nevada Construction, Inc., for the Marina Rock Wall and Stairway Repair Project, bid number twenty-one-dash-twenty-two-dash-zero-zero-three-P W P W A two-zero-two-two-dash-zero-three-three. Mr. Kasen?
Good afternoon. Brian Kasen, Capital Projects Manager, for the record. I will make this as long and drawn out as I possibly can. Yeah. Crickets. Okay, so, the project is the Marina Rock Wall and Stairway Repair Project. The site map that you have up here shows the general location of the project. It's on the west side of the Marina, near the Holly Quick Memorial. The project consists of constructing a new wall out in front of the existing wall for approximately a forty-foot length. With that new wall, we have to remove the existing stairway and install a new stairway in a different configuration to be able to run over the top of the new wall. We will also be constructing and repairing new concrete sidewalk in that area and installing a new A D A ramp that will improve the access to the walkway. The staff recommends the Redevelopment Agency approve the Marina Rock Wall and Stairway Project in the amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-and-seven dollars to Sierra Nevada Construction. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Kasen, what is the timeline on that? If this is approved today?
If it's approved, the primary component we will have to wait on is the stairway is going to be a manufactured stairway that we have to get all the steel and all those items for. So, we get going as soon as possible by it. But I anticipate probably a month or two before we can get the materials. And as soon as we get going on the project, it will be roughly a two-month project.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other questions? Agency Member Anderson?
Yeah, I would just wonder, as far as the timing with all the other projects, if I'm hearing correctly, everything should pretty much be complete come spring?
Yeah, so, I mean, that'll be another factor. And when this starts, we do have to do some coordination. Of course, we have the Marina, all abilities that hopefully is going to start here very soon in January. And then, we have Veterans Memorial, and we have this item. And we will coordinate the pathways and keeping certain areas open. This does have a pathway modification involved in the actual plan to reroute people around the project, and they'll have temporary fence up and all those items. And so, hopefully, yes, everything, most everything will be completed by the time summer comes around, by the time Memorial Day arrives.
Any other questions or comments? I'm looking for a motion. Agency Member Anderson?
Move to approve a construction contract in the amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-seven dollars with Sierra Nevada Construction Incorporated for the Marina Rock Wall and Stairway Repair Project, bid number two-one-dash-two-two-dash-zero-zero-three-P W P W A twenty-two-two-dash-zero-three-three.
Okay, I have a motion. Agency Member Abbott?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kasen.
Thank you.
On to Item eight, eight-point-one, comments from the public. Again, any comments from the public? No publics, so I will close it. Eight-point-two, announcements from the Agency and Chief Administrative Officer. Any announcements? Seeing none? We are adjourned, and everybody have a happy holidays. We'll see you after the first of the year. Thanks.